Well, thank you so much for that very warm reception. That's pretty nice on a very hot day. And we've got a great program. We're going to make our comments brief to kick off the top. But welcome to the Coyotes Town Hall. We want to get to as many questions as we can. A personal aside before I turn it over to Anthony LeBlanc. I want to thank each and every one of you because on Fox Sports Arizona's coverage this year of Coyotes games, we had an 85% increase in television ratings. Eighty-five percent, thanks to all of you and everybody else that watches. It was the largest percentage increase in the entire National Hockey League. So give yourselves a round of applause. Thank you very, very much. All right, with us onstage tonight, President and CEO Anthony LeBlanc. The architect on the hockey side, General Manager Don Maloney. And one of the best, if not the best, bench boss, former Jack Adams winner as Coach of the Year, Dave Tippett. All right, Anthony, what do you say? Let's get going.
Well, I don't want to speak for Dave and Don, but I don't know what their reaction was to come into the standing ovation. My initial reaction was to say, "Thank you, goodnight." But no, thank you so much for coming. This is really important to us. I hope you're starting to see a trend. I know that Don and myself and George Gosby did one of these town halls at one of our tailgates during the season. The three of us did a town hall just for our season ticket holders before the season started. But it's really important to us. We went through a full series of, I guess, focus groups, for lack of a better expression or a better term, right at the conclusion of the season. We did four or five different groups. It's all about getting your feedback. So that's the purpose of tonight, is to understand what people are thinking, try to answer your questions, and if we can't, to go back and find out what the answers are. And before we get going, I do have, myself and George Gosby, I guess we're not the smart ones in the group. We tend to be the more out-front members of the ownership group. But we are a group of nine of us, and I'm thrilled to have two of my colleagues here tonight. We have Bob Gwynn. And we have Scott Dutton, who is smartly dressed for the weather. And these guys are part of the group. We'll be touching upon the fact that tomorrow, these two guys, unfortunately for them, get to spend the full day with Bob, Scott, myself, and our other six partners. But it's really because we want to hear from these guys to understand what needs to be done to make the team better. But I'm just thrilled to have these guys here with us tonight. But most importantly, thrilled to have everyone here. So thank you for coming.
All right, thank you, Anthony. We're going to get right to the questions. You all had opportunities to submit online. We've taken, I believe we've got 10 questions right now, and we can do follow-ups on the questions. I'll do that as the moderator up here. But the first one comes from Ray Longo, and this is for you, Anthony. With the name change, will there be any changes to the logo or uniforms for next season?
The only real change you'll see in the uniform for this coming season is on the shoulder patch. We'll be replacing the PHX and replacing it with an AZ. What we're excited about with the name change, and I'll kind of, don't forget, I'm a salesperson at heart, so I'm going to be selling to you all evening long. On June 27th, when the three of us and all of Don's staff are in Philadelphia for the draft, that is the actual official day of the name change. So we're going to be holding a draft party out at the arena in Glendale. And that'll be the first day, and you'll only be able to get it there, that you'll have merchandise of the Arizona Coyotes available. So please make sure you join us on June 27th in Glendale.
And a follow-up to that, Arizona, it's not just Phoenix, it's not just Glendale, right? That was a big part of the whole, maybe the full integration of the state, correct?
Yeah, I mean, when we were going through the process with the city of Glendale, they articulated how important it was to them that we were seen not just as a team for Phoenix, which makes a heck of a lot of sense considering we don't play in Phoenix, we play in Glendale. But we obviously consider ourselves a team for the entire valley, team for the entire state, and quite frankly, a team for the entire Southwest.
All right, next question. Coach, you're up. Karen Roberts asks, "Which players were you most impressed with last season, and who do you think will have breakout seasons this upcoming year?"
Ah, that's a good one. Well, the first guy that probably was the best, I'd seen him in two or three years at the start of the year was Shane Doan. And if you would have told me, he had a couple of minor surgeries last summer. He came into camp in great shape. If you would have told me that he was going to get something called Rocky Mountain Fever in the middle of the season. But a lot of you know, I keep a lot of different stats about how players are doing and what they're doing on the ice. Shane was off to one of his best starts since I've been around here. And it's really disappointing that, you know, an unfortunate illness hit him. Not just the time he missed from the illness, but it really took a toll on him the rest of the way. So he was a guy that I was very impressed with. Like I say, at his age, coming off a couple surgeries and really pushing himself to be a better player, unfortunate that ended the way he did for him. The other guy was Anton Vermette, who is, he was a player that, you know, he's a player that, from a coach's perspective, just touches so many parts of the game. And he ended up being our leading goal scorer this year. He is our key face-off guy, great penalty killer, key guy on the power play, and we play him against every other team's top player. I shouldn't be saying this because Don's going to try to sign him probably, so making his job tougher. But Anton Vermette was a very good player for us. And when we teamed him and Michael Bodker up, I thought those two were as good of forwards as we had this year.
Tip, some of the guys you saw at the end of the year, Mark Visentin got a quick look. What about the young blue line, some of the guys that we saw right at the end?
Yeah, very key. You've got Gormley, Gormley and Murphy are both going to be players that will really push to make our lineup this year. I'd be surprised if they don't make our lineup. Both very good young players, have put their time in the minors, have really pushed their game ahead. And at the end of the year, we were playing some critical games, we put them in some critical situations, and both of them responded very well. They're already both training, getting ready for next year. I expect both those young defensemen to be key figures for many years to come.
All right, the next question is from Steven Irwin. And this is for you, Don. Let's get right into the free agency questions. Here we go. "Which Coyotes free agents do you hope to sign, and what are you looking to add for next season?"
Well, you know, it's an interesting time right now in the National Hockey League. And for anybody that pays attention to what players make and salaries, and it's very lucrative. They work hard, they're well-paid, there's a lot of revenue being generated, and consequently, they all are looking for what would they receive their value. Unfortunately, their perception and my perception are a little different when you miss the playoffs two years in a row. So we've touched, the way the process works, right now, you touch base with all your free agents, you get an idea of what it would take to sign them before they hit the open market, which I have done. And I've just gotten my breath back, quite frankly, so I'm trying to digest and trying to decide where we're going to go. One thing we know, you know, we made a good push last year. We thought we would be a playoff team. Obviously, the Smith injury certainly didn't help us. But we're not content to miss the playoffs year after year and be close. So we've looked long and hard the last month and a half about how do we get better, how do we improve? And so our philosophy right now is looking at our entire organization, putting some younger people, giving them opportunities to play for us next year. Obviously, they have to earn it, but part of the trick is leaving roster positions open for some younger players to win a spot. So in a roundabout way, the good thing for Coyote fans, obviously, is there's not a free agent that played here that doesn't want to stay. The challenge is to try and come up with a salary they can live with and we can live with. And that's an ongoing challenge that every team has, including us. So in a roundabout way, it's a work in progress.
And I don't envy you on that. I'll defer that to you, Don. Along those lines, you've locked up a lot of players. Oliver Ekman-Larsson got locked up a little more than a season ago. You guys have spent a lot of money. How important is it for the core guys to lock up when you lock them up?
Well, obviously, we got ahead of Oliver's contract a year ago, which was really a smart thing to do. He is such, as we all know, we're all Ekman-Larsson fans, he's a terrific player and an evolving player. I think if you look at this year and our power play, I know we brought in Neil Brown as assistant coach, done a terrific job with our power play. Keith Yandle is one of the top offensive defenseman in the league. But really, Tip and Neil putting Oliver and Keith out there, you could see the emergence of Oliver in his offensive game. And I think it's still, we're still just touching the tip of how good this player is going to be. So having him locked up is one of those ones where you, every Sunday, you go to church and thank the good Lord for allowing us to do that. But even Shane Doan, Mike Smith, the core people that we have, they're money in the bank for us. It's the other UFAs that are really the concern. Tip touched on a player like Anton Vermette. He has one year left in the contract. Certainly, we plan to engage him this summer to see if there's a way to do something early. The trouble in the game today is it's very difficult to do because they're looking around, they're saying, "Well, a year from now, I might be able to get, you know, here." And we're saying, "Well, can you take maybe down here?" And so it's an ongoing challenge to try and lock people up.
All right, next question for you, Anthony. This is from Jeff Keck. "Are you doing anything to improve the food and beverage choices and the speed of service at jobbing.com Arena for next season?"
Yes. You know what, before I answer that, and I'm not trying to defer because there's actually a really good answer to that question, just hearing Don talk about it to Matt's question of the importance of locking people up. I mean, our view in the ownership group, and we were very vocal about this 11, 12 months ago when we were going through the final stages, was there were two individuals that we needed locked up to get this deal done. And it's the two guys to my left that I'm thrilled to share this stage with. So if it wasn't for these two guys, this team wouldn't be in the situation it is. So I've said it before, and I'll say it again, you know, they're long-term members of our organization, and we're thrilled for it. Food and beverage, yes. So we actually met with, and I know that our friends at Levy Restaurant Group got a lot of negative feedback, in particular when we were going through all of the sessions after the end of the season. And they understand it, and we understand it. And quite frankly, we, for lack of a better expression, we set them up to fail. I don't know if everyone realizes, we actually signed the contract with those guys literally five days before preseason started. Wasn't one of my smartest moves, but it was our first year as owners, and they did what they could. But this coming season, so Avic Day, who's here, who's a part of our group and is our chief financial officer, and myself, we met with Levy last week, and they rolled out their plan for us. So everyone will be very happy to hear that there were going to be 14 new points of presence in the food and beverage side throughout the building. There will be seven existing, I guess, hard-fixed stations that will be completely redone. There will be over 20, 25, I believe it is, new points of presence in regards to point of sale. Look, at the end of the day, I hate it when people come up to me and say, "I wanted to give you my money, and you wouldn't let me take my money." So I'm going to let myself take your money. And we will ensure that the food quality is second to none. And we were just talking about this outside. We're going to be putting together a few sessions for people to be able to come in and try it as we get into the preseason. But we're really excited. We understand that it wasn't at the standard that everyone expected. Quite frankly, it wasn't even halfway towards the standard of what people expected. We apologize for that. I promise you, we will see a very substantial change this coming season. And by the way, for those of you that care, we will have a second Tim Hortons stand.
I was just going to say that. I was wondering what the plans were for the Timbits and the Great Coffee, so. Dave, this question's from Scott Thompson. "Max Domi and Henrik Samuelsson had very good seasons. What are their chances of making the squad in the fall?"
I think both those young players will come in and push. And there's a couple reasons why. One, they've got one training camp under their belt. They came in last year. Henrik certainly is a guy that has the size, continued to need to play as many minutes as he could. His issue is a little bit of foot speed. He's a big, strong, hard player, but the speed of the game goes up a notch up here. But he's gone through a training camp, he's had a great season, obviously had a great Memorial Cup. He's going to come in here with a real attitude. And the one thing about Max and Samuelsson is they both, they're not in awe of this situation. They've been around this life, their whole lives, with their dads being players. So both of them will push hard for our team. Max, I'll just say a little bit about him. The one thing that's really intriguing, and Max intrigued us right to the end of training camp last year, is his speed and his precision with skill of the puck, passing, shooting, is something that is very attractive to our team. So I expect both those guys to push. Max's speed will be certainly a factor coming into camp.
Tip, when you have a player in training camp, and you see him one year and he doesn't make the team, and then you see him again the following year, how do you know?
Maturity. You see kids, and I always, Don and I laugh all the time, when you have a young player come into your office and tells you he doesn't have confidence. I just not, you know, I don't feel like I have confidence here. That's a good sign to me that you're not ready to play here then. When a kid comes in and says, "Hey, I want more ice time because I'm going to do this and this for you," I got no problem giving a kid like that a chance. But it's interesting, young players, you can tell when they go through a stage of when they're ready and not ready. And I'll give you a great example of that, and Don might touch on it too. Mike Stone was a player that, he's come through our organization, he's had a couple years in the minors, always kind of pushing, he's kind of right on that bubble of getting in. And he went through one stage of the season this year, probably played 15 or 20 games, was a pretty good player for us, but at the end of that 15 games, was starting to dip off a little bit. And he, you know, this was the longest stretch of games he'd really played in the league. And he got to thinking, "Well, hey, I'm here, I'm playing every day, I'm going to be, I'm an NHL player now." And his game started to drop off. And that's when a young player has to recognize that, you know what, there's somebody else coming. You took somebody else's job, there's somebody else coming. Or the guy that you took their job, they might be a little sour that you took their job, and they're going to come back after it. And we sent Mike Stone down after about 15 games, and I remember the night, it was in Nashville. And I think it was one of those nights, it might even be when his parents were coming to see him play or something, like one of those really bad ones, he got sent down. But he went down, he was down about another week, and he came back, and he looked at me, says, "Now I get it. Now I get it. Now I know that what I need to do to be an NHL player." So all players are different, young players go through each, they each have their own way of doing things. But when they come and they give you that sign that they're ready to play, you'll see them on the ice an awful lot.
All right, Don, this one's for you. Matt Converse wants to know what type of player you'll be looking to add at the draft in Philadelphia at the end of the month?
Well, you know, the philosophy we have, and every team pretty much has, is the best skill talent available. Certainly, you look at the league right now, and you look at how important the center ice position is. I mean, if it comes down to a center iceman or a winger, you usually err on the center iceman spot. Defense is always hard to find. We look at where we are as an organization, we're competing with the LAs, Anaheim, San Jose's. Not only do you need a little bit of bulk or size, but you have to have speed. It's really important. If anybody's watching the playoff games now, that, you see that Chicago-LA Game Five overtime, it's just, it's remarkable, the pace of the game and the weather. And that's where we have to get to, where we want to be. So we've got a very good pick at 12, we have a couple second-round picks, we're fairly well-positioned to hopefully help ourselves. I don't see anybody in this draft that's going to come in next year, quite frankly, unless we hit lightning in a bottle that'll come and play for us. But hopefully, we'll be adding some good assets to our organization.
And a follow-up to that, at your press conference at the end of the season, you brought up three words, the Detroit model. And Detroit has had a lot of success in the past, being good for a long period of time. Explain the Detroit model. What do you mean by that?
Well, this, really, the way you build an organization, there's two different ways to go, basically. You can be bad, real bad, for a long time, and get all the top picks. You look at everybody from Pittsburgh before they had their incredible run, to, you could argue, Chicago had the first overall pick, five, six, seven years out of the playoffs. The Islanders have been doing it forever. Or you look at a team like Detroit or the Devils. And that's where we want to be. We want to be a team that's in the playoffs every year with a chance to win. And we just think, I look at our organization now with our goaltending and our coaching as good as anybody in the West. We have some other holes, we've got a nice group of players on our blue line, including a star, a couple stars, really, with Oliver and Keith Yandle. It's the up front where we have to find that impact player or two. But yeah, we have no interest in, God willing, sinking to the bottom for years and years and years. I don't think anybody out here has either. We want to win, we want to win now, and that's the challenge.
And you mentioned about, I lost my train of thought here, the Detroit model, the fact that drafting, you can look at maybe at free agency, but drafting really is the backbone of an organization, correct? I mean, maybe you fill holes in free agency, but you've got to draft well.
I hate Detroit too, by the way. So I mean, I don't want to talk about them. Actually, I really respect what they've done. I mean, they made the playoffs.
We can call it the New Jersey model, if you want.
Yeah, let's make it the Coyote model. That's what we want to do. But we, the thing with Detroit, the consistency they have, 25 years though, making the playoffs, I mean, it's remarkable, really. In this age, you can see the parity in the league, anybody can beat anybody on a good night. And so that really is, but what they also do well is they don't force-feed their players into their system. They're able to take the time, and you look at a young player like Tartar, who came up, or Gus, what's the kid's name, Gussev? Not Gus, Nyquist, that's it, yeah. Somebody should be sitting up here, and I can just sit down there. But there's another guy, that two, three years in the minors, real good scorer, they win a championship down there, he finally gets a regular chance, and he's scoring goals by the bucket full. And really, that's in an ideal situation, that's the way we'd like to be. Our situation, with a young player like Max Domi, we may, just because of the circumstance and his type of game, he might be one of those special players that we can put on our team at a relatively young age. But we're very cautious about force-feeding younger players into the NHL before they're ready.
All right, we're going to go back to the business side for this next one. Anthony, Rhett and Trish Akers want to know, "I saw that the Coyotes signed a new merchandise deal with Fanatics. What kind of improvements will we see?"
It's a great question and timely, because this morning, we had Fanatics in the office with us. There are actually maybe a few of the representatives here this evening. And I have to tell you, it felt like Christmas morning, because they were handing out samples. The only downside was they were samples of other teams, which we gave them crap for. But at least they didn't give us samples of LA, God help us. But to put it in perspective for you, so first off, if you're not familiar with Fanatics, they are the industry leader in the sports field. Predominantly, they're on the internet side, so they manage the websites for all of the major leagues. But just to put it in perspective of the amount of items that you'll see in the store this year versus last year, on opening night, we will actually have more, a larger amount of inventory in the store for opening night than we had the entire season last year. So we will be doubling the amount of items available, and it will be across the board. I mean, they were telling us, the staff this morning, that in headwear alone, they have over 100 items. So we won't have over 100 items in the headwear department, but we will have a lot. And we're going to, it'll be across the board. It'll be, obviously, you know, men and women's merchandise from a clothing perspective, but there'll also be, you know, things that are, you know, people like me that are pet people. There'll be things for your dogs, there'll be, you know, everything. Everything that you want with Coyotes on it, within reason, we will make available. So we're really excited about Fanatics. But as I indicated, the first opportunity that you will have to buy some new Fanatics gear with Arizona Coyotes on it will be June 27th at our draft party.
And that'll be at jobbing.com?
At jobbing.com Arena, correct.
Spencer Hahn, Coach, has a question. "With the team losing some of its defensive identity this season, how important is it to reestablish that identity for next season?"
I think that's a great question. And if you look at the way the season went for us, that's some of the issues that we thought we had. And at the first part of the season, we were scoring goals, and everybody was euphoric because we had a group of new owners come in, and everybody thought, "This is all just great," right? And maybe just feeling good, if you feel good and you shoot the puck a lot, it goes in the net. But as the season wore on, the defensive deficiencies we were playing with started to expose themselves. And I think it was really, we were, it was a euphoric situation where people thought we were all set now. We've got ownership, we're just going to play, and everything's going to be hunky-dory. But you've got to put work in. And if you watch the playoffs right now, if you don't know how to play defense, and if you don't defend very well, you're not going to be a playoff team. And the upsetting part about it is a little bit, as Don mentioned here, the Smith injury, I think, hurt us because the second half of the season, we really started to play what I call Coyote hockey, where we played hard, we defended well, we won close games. And sometimes, it's not as entertaining. And I know some of those six-five wins where we came back from two goals early on, that's all well and fun, and we were having high fives all over the place. But you're not going to get in a series with LA and expect to come back two goals down every game. So it's something we've already talked about as a coaching staff. There's areas that we want to address right at the start of training camp. And we've got to get back to playing real strong Coyote hockey if we want to be a championship caliber team.
Tip, as you watch the playoffs, and I think it's been some of the best hockey we've seen in quite some time, if ever, in the playoffs, it's just been a lot of fun to watch. A lot of it has been those mistakes that you're talking about. What's your one takeaway from watching the postseason, if you could maybe just say one?
Well, I got, I talked to Joel Quenneville after the game the other night in Chicago-LA, and I thought that series was as good a series I've seen in a long time. And we both laughed because, and this is no disrespect to goalies, but we both laughed at that last couple games, the goalies weren't very good in that. You have two top teams, two top, you know, where they have top players, and you have poor goaltending, leads to a really exciting game. And we both talked about, if you could ever get the goaltender's equipment smaller and get a few more goals in the game with, as well as these teams are playing, it makes it really exciting. And we laughed about it. Obviously, he was disappointed with the series. But both goaltenders, they didn't play very well. But the speed and the tenacity and just the will to win of both those teams is something that jumps out at you, that if you're going to compete at the top level in this league, you better be willing to do that every single night.
Next question's for you, Don, from Tom Savoy. "Are there any players in Portland that might have a chance to make the Coyotes roster next season?" That's kind of double-ended, because we saw some of Portland at the end making valuable contributions.
Yeah, certainly, Tip touched on Connor Murphy and Brandon Gormley will make a serious run. Two players that really had strong seasons, first-year players, Lucas Lassio, who, remember, he started the first couple games with us. He ended up, I think he was top five in goal scoring, 28, 29 goals in the American League. And for a 20-year-old in that league to do that, it's really a feat. I actually saw them play quite a bit down the stretch, and he's a very interesting player because he can, he has dynamic power and speed. He creates things on his own, it's just he can be all over the ice at times. So he's a young, learning player, but he's got the kind of speed and power that applies to today's NHL game. And the question will be, can he play in a structured system without the puck? Another guy, Tobias Ryder, who we picked up a year ago from Edmonton, he's really a young, verbatim-type player, very intelligent. Another guy that was one of the top five goal scorers in the American Hockey League. That Portland team didn't have a very good season, they, there were a lot of issues down there, they had to play in a rink 45 miles north, it was a disaster. But those two players, when we look at our team and I say, "You know what, I know we were talking about, you know, Max Domi or Henrik Samuelsson," but I think those two guys are going to be right there, competing for one or two of those spots.
Another player that was around here at the end that kind of got a little bit of a taste was Tyler Godditch, just being around. Can you talk a little bit about Tyler?
Sure. Tyler's an interesting story, because you probably saw, we signed him at the end of his junior career. He's another late bloomer. Basically, a year and a half ago, he came into the OHL as a walk-on, because the coach that he had at Tier Two was now the coach of this junior team in Sault Ste. Marie. And one of our scouts saw him at the end of, two years ago, just happened to see one of their final games, and noticed this big center iceman that moves pretty good, and made note of it. And then in the fall, saw him early, and said, "We have to get on this player." And really, Brad Trillay, I mean, he's no longer here, did a real good job of, you know, getting on top of him, meeting the player. I had conversations with the player and the coach. And we had another in, is that one of our pro scouts, his brother was coaching the his brother was coaching the junior team in Sault Ste. Marie, assistant coach. So, long story short, he's a good-sized centerman. What impresses me, we know how we have to play to win here. We're not, we're never going to be a spending team like the Rangers or, you know, those high-spending teams. So, we look for players that could fit into the style we think could be successful. And Tyler, he's a good-sized player, very responsible, very good without the puck. I'm really curious to see him at his first pro camp. He may walk into the jobbing.com arena in September and never go anywhere because he's physically mature. So, he's, he's a guy to keep an eye on next September because he might just surprise us all.
Good stuff. Anthony, Kyle Canfield wants to know, will the Coyotes be getting an outdoor game or possibly even an All-Star game very soon?
Well, if it was up to me. We definitely have voiced our desire and our opinion that we feel it's a, we're a viable market for an outdoor game. I wouldn't expect to see one this coming season, but I do think it's fair to expect that we will see one in the near future. But that's, you know, I'm, maybe I spend too much time with lawyers. I'm not representing that. But I do think it's a fair expectation. But on the All-Star game side, as everyone knows, the city lost the All-Star game, the lockout, the, not the most previous, the one before that. And that is, that has been promised to us. We will be getting an All-Star game. The question is just, it's not a question of if, it's a question of when. And I think Commissioner Bettman alluded to that at the press conference back on August 6th. So, we will see that sometime in the near future.
Maybe an obvious question, but the success of the LA outdoor game and some of the non-traditional markets, that could only enhance the chances of this organization getting one correct, or no?
We feel so. I mean, a number of us were at the game in Dodger Stadium in late January and it was, it was a tremendous game. But I mean, all of the stadium games and obviously the Winter Classic games are just really well-run. So, we think that any potential challenges, it's interesting, we heard that the teams were saying and the coaches were saying that the ice in Los Angeles was actually better than the ice in some of the other markets because they knew what to expect. Tip was actually talking about this the other day. What were they saying? That the ice gets a little too brittle in some of the markets?
Yeah, between snow and it gets almost too cold in some of the markets for outside. The ice in Los Angeles, I talked to both coaches, they thought it was as good as their normal rinks. So, it wasn't, it wasn't a factor in the game like it has been in some of the other outdoor games.
Yeah, Dan Craig is the Ice Guru and I believe I read somewhere where they can make ice for outdoor games and sustain the ice up to 58 degrees or something. So, I don't think that would be a problem at all.
Yeah, no, we don't think so either. We just want to do it at the right time. And look, quite frankly, if you're going to do one of these games, you have to make sure it's going to be a success. So, we, you know, the commissioner is, there's nobody who has been more supportive of hockey in Arizona than Commissioner Gary Bettman. So, I feel very strongly that, you know, as he says, and unfortunately, he's not joking, it's the only market in the world where Wayne Gretzky gets booed and he gets cheered. But he has been, been nothing but supportive. So, we feel very confident that we'll see that in the future.
And when the Coyotes win the cup someday, cheer Gary Bettman. He's done a heck of a lot for us, trust me. Edward Simcoe, Anthony LeBlanc, you're back on the hot seat. Will single-game ticket prices increase next year? Will parking fees remain the same?
Is that really the time? Look, at the end of the day, we are going to retain being one of the best, you know, value propositions in the National Hockey League. This past season, we were the third lowest average ticket price in the National Hockey League. Will prices go up? In some sections, they will. But in some sections, they won't. In some sections, we're actually going to reprice them. So, of course, everyone's like going, I hope that's my section that's being repriced the other way. But at the end of the day, we do need to ensure that our average ticket price continues to creep up at a smart level because at the end of the day, that's how this team is going to succeed financially. But, you know, we are really thrilled about the fact that this, this team really is a tremendous value proposition. And we're proud of the fact that we are a major league sport that families can come and afford and enjoy. But again, I'll put my sales hat back on if I haven't had it on all night. And remind you that if you're looking for the best possible value though, when it comes to season ticket prices, when it comes to season ticket options and benefits, there's no better way than being a full-season member. And full-season memberships are available now. Half-season, season tickets will be going on sale very shortly when the schedule is released. I think in the next two, three weeks, we're going to see the schedule. And then we'll have our partials available late in the year.
And the magic words too, to put my sales hat on, representatives are standing by. So, so feel free to get as much information as you need. Okay, a few more additional questions handed to me. Don, how are Mike Smith and Shane Doan feeling? You talked a little bit about Shane. How is Mike Smith after the injury in New York? How are they doing?
Yeah, obviously, Mike's injury at the time was a little more severe than, you know, than we originally reported. It turned out to be just a knee sprain. If we had gotten to the playoffs, I think there was a pretty good chance we'd see him at some point during the series. So, that's one of those things, just takes rest and time. And he got the full clean bill of health a month and a half ago. So, there's no issues whatsoever. He'll be back. And Tip alluded to, we were really excited about Mike's play the second half of the year, about two weeks before the Olympic break and then after. If you look at his numbers, he had about a 9.34 save percentage and a, under 2, 194 goals against average in that stretch, which we thought, okay, this is the Mike Smith we expect going forward. Shane is feeling much better. You know, the illness that he had, it just, it wasn't so much, I mean, we, he ended up, he just pushed himself back in the lineup. It really didn't feel the same all year long. Fatigued early, you know, he's, he muscled himself through games and we all saw, I mean, you guys watched the games too, that the pace sometimes after 15 seconds, 20 seconds would fall off. And I had breakfast with him about a week and a half ago and he told me, I said, I'm just now starting to feel myself again. So, that's encouraging for all of us. And if we can get him back to where he was last September and come in with that kind of hunger to lead this club, then we're certainly much further ahead.
And a bit of a follow-up on Schmitty, Coach, he made the Olympic team for Canada. He didn't play, but he saw pucks, he saw shots. He had to practice against the best players, some of them, some of the best players in the world. How key was that for Mike down the stretch with those numbers he put up?
Well, his Canadian experience, like you say, he didn't get any games. I ran into him the other day and I've got a hard time because I said, how long have you been feeling well for? He said, oh, I've been feeling good two or three weeks now. Well, I said, I really could have used you in Belarus over there. That was a little disappointing when Finland, Finland's got Pekka Rene and we don't have Mike Smith. That's not, that's not fair. But no, Schmitty, Schmitty is a guy that, you know, I think, he was a little bit of the byproduct of what I talked about at the start of the year. Everybody was kind of euphoric. Schmitty had a new long-term contract and everything was just going to be great. And the first 40 games or so, we weren't great. We weren't as good as we wanted to be. And it took a little bit of soul-searching to dig down and get our games in order. And Schmitty was right in that boat. Like Don said, he started to play well just before the Olympic break. Going over there, I think it was good for him that he didn't get a whole break there, got over, stepped, kept stopping pucks. And the experience of being around not just great players, but great leaders over there, I think has really helped him. Because we need him to be one of our core people. And he came back, played very well.
You know, it's interesting, that whole Team Canada experience. So, Brad Treely was still here. He was assistant manager on that team. Tip was the coach. And Team Canada contacted me right at the end of the year to say, is Mike Smith, we allow him to play? And so, I'm sitting there now, he's got his knee, it's not quite healed. So, I really was conflicted. You know, I knew Tip could probably use a goalie and certainly Brad was, you know, one of the guys putting the team together. But really, for the Coyotes ourselves, I didn't see any advantage whatsoever to having him play. I'm not going to tell you what I told them, but I think you can understand.
No, well, I'll leave it at that. Tip, one follow-up on the World Championships. As a coach, you know, you're seeing players that you don't often see, but you're seeing other NHLers. And I mean, is it an advantage outside just the X's and O's of coaching, of maybe gaining a little intelligence that you can park in the back of your mind?
Oh, certainly. That's why anytime you get an experience or get asked to be involved in an experience like that, it's, you can't pass it up. The players you get to know, the players you get, you know, and it's not just on the ice, it's not the X's and O's. Like you say, it's the day-to-day, how they carry themselves, the skill they practice with. You really get a good read on players. And we had a very young team, lots of young players in the NHL. It's a challenge. You get over there and they show up, you got two games to put your team together and then jump into the tournament, here you go. So, you know, it was a great experience. Like I say, you see a young player like Nathan McKinnon and had a great year, is probably going to be Rookie of the Year. And you see the dynamic skill that this young player plays with. It is, it's really intriguing. And then you go on the other side of it where a player like Kevin Bieksa from Vancouver, who was our captain, you know, I don't, I didn't know him before this tournament. You always respect him as a competitor and what he does for his team. And, you know, just reaffirm some of the thinking you have. So, it's a great, great exposure to other players, also a great exposure for other coaches. Because you get new ideas. You know, Paul Maurice and Pete DeBurr from New Jersey were the other coaches that I coached with. Very good guys, very good coaches. So, it's a, it's a great experience.
Few more here, back to the business side. Anthony, a fan writes, is anything being done to improve cellular reception in the arena?
Yeah, it is. There's a technology that, the acronym is DAS or DAS. And we're working with the preeminent company here in the Valley. And I always confuse their name with our liquor distributor, which is a funny one to just confuse with Jim Foss's Crown Castle or, Crown Castle, that's the right one?
Thumbs up.
What's the liquor, there we are, perfect. And the liquor distributor is Crescent Crown. See, you can understand Crescent Crown, Crown Castle. We are going to put in the technology, the DAS technology, it's going in in the offseason. And then we, they work in conjunction with the cellular carriers here in the Valley. So, you will absolutely see a tremendous difference in regards to cell coverage this coming year in the arena, which is, which is obviously important for everybody. But it's really important for the Coyotes and the staff because we're in the process right now of moving from our offices in Westgate into the arena as our full-time offices. So, it would really stink if we couldn't get our cell phones working in the arena. So, we're thrilled on the partnership and that will come, as I said, when preseason starts, you will see a real improvement in cell coverage.
We have a radio question here too for you, Anthony. And before I go any further, Bob Heathouse, if you don't know Bob, he's one of the nicest, most genuine people you'll ever meet. I've known Bob for probably 25 years and he'll be back next season on the radio side. Will your games be broadcast on Arizona Sports KTR again next season?
Yes, they will be, which we're really excited about. KTR is a flagship station here in the Valley. And we're looking to make some enhancements on the radio side as well. Been working with Rich Nar and our VP of Communications on adding a color commentator on the radio side, which we're really excited about. Of course, that was a start for one certain Tyson Nash. So, we're really excited about adding that resource as well because radio is a, you know, it, people will say that it's a dying technology. We completely disagree. And everybody will, I think, will agree when you're leaving the arena in particular. I don't think there's any of us who aren't tuned into 98.7 to listen to that postgame or the pregame on our drive-in.
And the people that do the television games, Fox Sports Arizona, great partnership, long agreement with them. A lot of people wonder about the over-the-air next year. Are we going to be back on 3TV as well?
Yeah, I mean, we're thrilled with the long-term arrangement we signed with Fox Sports Arizona. They have just this amazing play-by-play guy who does a tremendous job for us. But yes, please, give him a hand. He does do a great job. I do expect we will have some games on Channel 3. All we care about is to ensure that every single game is available on television here in the Valley and hopefully soon in the entire state. Because I know with Channel 3, there's, you know, some pockets where there's quite a few of our fans, in particular Tucson, where you can't get Channel 3. So, we are working with Fox Sports Arizona to understand they have the first right of refusal on all games. I hope that they'll take all of them. But then, of course, there will be some national games on NBC, SN. And whatever is not picked up by either of those two, we certainly hope and expect. We'll have a partnership with Channel 3 again.
Yeah, and I believe last year was the first time every game was seen in the Phoenix market, which was, which was wonderful. And the more time you can spend with Tyson Nash, the better it is. So, trust me, he's a, he's a great guy. He's a wonderful person. That's it on the questions. Anthony, would you like to wrap it up here? We're about, almost 50 minutes into it. Just from my personal standpoint, thanks everybody for coming out. But I'm going to leave that to Anthony for closing remarks.
Yeah, well, I think you said that very well. Look, as Matt said earlier, there's a number of us wandering around, most of us in our Coyotes golf shirts, although a number of you are in Coyotes golf shirts as well. So, someone might kind of come up to you and try to buy tickets. So, please don't send them away, send them to one of us. No, we have a number of our representatives are here, you know, members of our staff. As I mentioned, we have members of the ownership group. We would love to talk to you a little bit more, one-on-one, as long as you want to talk. But I would anticipate that the two gentlemen that you want to spend the most time with, and you'll rush the stage to talk to them, so I'll get out of the way, are these two guys. So, I really want to thank Don and I want to thank Dave for their time. For their time tonight, but more than anything, for their commitment to this team, for their commitment to this market and their commitment to winning. They're two of the best in the business and they're just really great guys to work with day in, day out. But at the end, you know, we can't thank all of you enough. We're here because of the fact that we have great fans that stuck through, you know, a situation that is now long behind us. So, the best news is, you know, I see people like George in the back and a number of you that spent a lot of time last summer in this incredible heat out at libraries. The only reason you have to go to a library is if you want to take on a good, take out a good book on hockey. So, thank you, everyone, and have a great, a great summer. We'll see you in the fall.
Thank you.